Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Board of Wareham for Monday, September 26, 2022. Meeting is called to order at exactly 6:00 PM. With the roll call, Sherri Corrigan.
Here.
Mike Baptiste.
Here.
Jane Gleason.
Here.
Sam Corbett.
Here.
Carl Schultz.
Here.
And the Chair, Michael King, is here. So we have a full board. Let's get right into it. Is there anybody here on behalf of 150 Tohannet Road and 27 Charge Pond Road? If you could come forward and identify yourself, please.
Good evening. Dean Smith from New Leaf Energy.
Good evening, Dean.
Good evening.
So, from what I understand, you are requesting an extension of the special permit for the properties listed, 150 Tohannet Pond Road and 27 Charge Pond Road?
That's correct, yes.
Is there a particular reason why you feel an extension is needed?
Yes, the properties are involved in a group study by the utility. And then, there's a DPU order that's pending beyond that for a capital investment project. And until that's approved, they can't issue the interconnection service agreement.
And how long has this study been going on?
It's been going on for years.
And the reason why the board wasn't made aware of the fact that, you know, this was going to affect the ability to start construction at 2-year mark?
Well, the property's been sold, actually. Both of them have, to two different companies. And they're responsible for it. We're still the developer, and we're staying on board for them through this process until the ISA is issued and they can move forward towards construction. Both of the approvals are still in force. So this would be the time that we're coming forward to let you know. There's still time within the timeframe for the special permits. And part of my request was also to understand if the board is considering the COVID emergency order that was put in place by the governor, if there was any tolling.
We continued to meet remotely.
Okay.
There was no interruption in meetings.
So, no, that's your position, no tolling, okay.
Not at all. I don't have it in front of me. Do we know when the special permit expiration date is on this, on these projects?
It's two years from the day of the.
Well, that much I do know. Do we know what that date is?
October 20.
October 20th of this year.
Not for both of them, for one of them.
Yes. For 27 Charge Pond, it would be October 20th of this year.
And for Tohannet?
For 150 Tohannet, it's December 29th.
Of this year?
Of this year, yes.
Okay, so, well, we'll go around. I have comments and questions.
Before I ask the board to ask for questions or comments, is there, what would be keeping you from starting construction at Charge Pond Road before 10/20?
The utility hasn't issued an interconnection services agreement.
So that poses a problem for you, then?
Yes, yes.
Because they're, not to sound mean, but the developers' inability to get the utility to play ball in a timely fashion is really not our concern.
All right, that's understood, but the utility is affecting all the projects down here across the board.
Right.
That's news to us, because I haven't heard that from any other project before us.
Right, yeah.
We have other solar projects before us, and you're the first one who said that.
Okay, well, there are a number of solar projects that are involved in the group study, not just projects that we've developed.
Okay, go on.
Why? When you mentioned a group study, could you elaborate on that just a little bit for me?
These projects are awaiting Massachusetts DPU Order 22-54. It's in a group study called the Plymouth Group Study. And they are accepting reply briefs under that that are due in January of next year. And they're expecting an order by quarter, the second quarter of next year.
What exactly is the purpose of the study?
The study is to study the effects of a group of projects on the distribution system. And then that connects into the transmission system. So, there's.
They're looking at the impact of solar arrays on the grid, basically.
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Looking at the impact of all these solar arrays that are being developed.
That's correct.
Their impact on the grid as it stands and whether it can handle the.
And studying what upgrades might be necessary to connect the whole group.
Okay. Scott?
Start with you.
Sherri, do you have questions?
Yes. Are all of the projects in the group solar projects? Or are there any battery storage projects in there as well?
There are not any standalone battery storage projects that I'm aware of. It would be PV plus storage in many, many cases.
It's, I'm interested that this has become a litigated proceeding at the DPU. Can you just briefly tell us what the basis of the litigation is?
It's not litigation. They're considering an order. Eversource, the utility, has requested approval of a capital investment project. And what that is, is a set of improvements that the utility wants to do to the overall distribution system to increase reliability and whatnot. So they've requested approval of that. That's what the order from the DPU would be.
Okay. And I guess, I'm concerned that we're presented now with a change in company, which has not been presented to us before, for any kind of approval or review of any kind. And, no offense, we don't necessarily know who you are. We don't, we see in your letter that you're assuming the obligations and rights of the prior owner. To me, this doesn't look like, first, I don't know if we have any authority to approve the transfer. I would assume that we do.
You do.
And without approving the transfer of the permits, I think it's premature to pass on the question of providing an extension. And even if it were possible to do all of that in a very accelerated way, you know, I think it's, it would be necessary for the new company to provide real proof in the form of documents, et cetera, that they are assuming all of the obligations that are important to us. And I think for the sake of this, and by that I mean obligations for bonds, actions, conditions, et cetera, the whole.
The OANM plan, the decommissioning plan, all that.
All of that. And I think, I think it's also fair to say that things have changed over the interval since this was approved. And it would be, although I wasn't on the board at the time, I think it would be a good idea for the board to ask itself whether these are still projects that would need approval. Because in my mind, looking at this as a lawyer not permitted to practice in this state, but a lawyer who has practiced, I don't know that you have the basis on which to say yes to this at this point. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Michael?
As a layperson, it seems like you guys created your own hardship, and you want us to kind of bend over backwards to assist you. I don't think, I guess I could agree with Sherri. I'm not an attorney, but it's kind of hard to solve this bill. You know, as you know, solar's been a very emotional thing for a lot of people in town. And, you know, you guys are changing players like a swap club. You know, don't know.
Okay, thank you. Jane?
Can you tell me if the study was, is mandated, or is that discretionary?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking. When we apply for an interconnection approval, the utility decides what studies are required. So it is mandated by the utility in order for us, our interconnection application to move forward.
So, I was not on the board at the time that this was all discussed. If I understand correctly, this is a project that has battery storage on site?
Correct.
And a connection to the grid?
Yes. It's a solar project with an energy storage component, and it's connected to the distribution grid.
Yeah, I think that's all the questions I have right now.
Oh. First, a clarifying question to the applicant. You said the property has been sold, or has the lease agreement for the solar been transferred?
It's the asset that was sold. I'm.
Which is the lease agreement?
Basically, yes. The property will still be held by the original property owner, yes.
Okay, so I was confused about that. Second question to Mr. Buckland. For the first application, 7/20, they missed the application filing for the extension by one day, is that correct? It expired 30 days before October 20th, would be September 20th, and maybe even earlier than that. The filing date was the 21st, so they missed the filing date. Is that correct?
According to your calculation, yes, it is.
Can we verify that? I mean, there's other questions, but I mean, we should confirm that they at least made the filing date for the extension.
Yeah, I would like to review that for confirmation.
Okay, yeah, that's a question that I had. My next question is again for Mr. Buckland. If we were to deny the extension, what if the implication of a denial of the extension?
The permit lapses, and if they want to continue the permit, they have to file a grievance in the Superior Court.
They would have to file a grievance, or they could refile a site plan special permit?
If they refile, they'd have to follow the new regulations.
Oh, they don't get zoning protection?
No, they don't have a.
The ANR didn't give them zoning protection?
ANR gives them the zoning protection for.
For a subdivision, but not necessarily.
Well, no, but it gives them for use.
Yeah, it does. Actually, the subdivision that they filed, it wasn't an ANR, it was a subdivision.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I said ANR, but you're right, it was a subdivision for these properties. Other ones were ANRs.
Right.
But this subdivision would give them zoning freeze.
That protects the zoning for seven years, yeah.
So the 2019.
Version of the bylaw.
Of the solar bylaw would apply.
That's right.
Okay. So, but they could, so they have two paths if we deny. They could appeal. They don't appeal to the zoning board, they appeal to the court?
That's right.
Okay. Or they could.
File again.
Is there a penalty for how soon they could refile?
No, there's not.
Okay, so this is without prejudice?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, those were my questions for that.
I wanted to point out one other thing. The implication here is on the new owner. The special permit runs with the land, not with the owner.
Well, that, I understood that, so that's.
Okay.
But the extension, I'm wondering if it expired or not. And I said if we didn't grant the extension, so.
Right.
Yeah, so I understand the special permit is affixed to the land. Okay. Sherri has the questions about how do we certify, well, the board has the questions. How do we certify the proper transfer and all the records and all that documentation? Okay, now, back to the applicant. First, I want to note in our bylaw, 594-1, Paragraph 8, says that "No ground-mounted solar energy facilities shall be approved or constructed until evidence has been given to the permit granting authority that the utility company that operates the electrical grid where the installation is located has been informed." So clearly, they were informed, but no one informed us that the study was going on and that there was any potential risk to the timeline. And now you're saying the approval could not, whatever approval, or, excuse me, not approval. The study and the things that come out of the study, which would then be imposed upon you, wouldn't be known probably until next year, mid-next year. Okay, that's, I'm getting the timing. Is it likely that the result of that study would cause a design change?
Only in terms of the improvements to the distribution system that would be required.
Not how you connect, not how you connect, or where you connect, or?
No, no. That's included in our application. It will be a matter of improvements beyond that, that would be part of that study.
Your site plan shouldn't be affected by this study?
No, no.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Will, could costs be affected? In other words, could you be allocated costs as a result of the capital improvements that might change the economies of this?
Yes, those are established.
Quite substantial.
Hard to know, it could be.
While I'm reading the document, and just to be fair, I mean, this document was distributed on May 25th. It indicated a meeting on June 23rd, so there was ample time to give us a heads up that you were going to have a problem. Because everybody knows the way the state moves. There was no way they were going to get this squared away so that you could get started on 27 Charge Pond by October 20th. That just wasn't going to happen.
Mike, what was the number on that? I didn't get it.
If you Google Plymouth Group Study 22-54, it comes right up the top of the page. But the, the way it's written, they estimate the cost of the upgrades at $163 million. The portion of it is going to be borne by the rate payers until they get, the state or the utility gets everything in order, and then they got to go back to the developers for a sizable chunk of that.
Does it list which projects are in the study?
Just towns, not particular studies.
It's everybody in Wareham?
Yes, it's actually quite a few towns.
Yeah, but I'm interested in Wareham.
Wareham is in the group, yes. Wareham is in the group.
Okay, so we have questions now for a whole bunch of other folks.
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, pretty much. Buzzards Bay, Carver, East Wareham, Kingston, Manomet, Marion, North Carver.
Oh, East Wareham, not?
No, well, West Wareham is, it's alphabetical order.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, yes, all of Wareham.
Why would they list east and west? Okay, that's interesting.
Sagamore, South Carver, West Wareham, White Horse Beach.
Okay, so.
And they're talking about a new substation, upgrades to substations, which might, I guess that would be Dirty Street, wouldn't it? Isn't that a substation in West Wareham?
It probably won't affect the parking lot, but, okay.
Probably not.
Okay, I think those were my questions. Thank you for clarifying the land ownership. Thank you for clarifying the schedule. We need to clarify, at least for the first one, if the request for the extension met the criteria. Looks like the second one probably did. But Ken, could you confirm that both meet the extension criteria?
Right.
The dates?
Will do.
Thank you. Ken clarified the implications for me of.
Of a denial?
Of a denial. So, I don't know. Those were my questions, Sam.
Well, that's, yeah, we'll have to. That's a big question.
We'll have to ask each applicant.
Can you turn to my phone?
I'm sorry. Question is, does it affect all the arrays in town? I mean, you've got a bunch of them.
Well, it's certainly going, I think for me, reading this document, it's certainly going to affect the cost of the project.
So it'll affect even the operational arrays?
Correct. Correct. They're all, everybody that connects to the grid in this area is going to be affected by this upgrade to the system.
I'm not sure it will affect the operational systems. I think it may just affect those that add on.
There wouldn't be a cost allocation back to them?
Two things go on. One is a cost allocation to the system, and then another is an allocation to the individual projects connecting to the system, as I remember.
Okay, thank you.
$94 million will be paid by the facilities out of the 163, so that's a big chunk of change.
So, again, just one more question back to Mr. Buckland. It's a procedural question. Are there timing? Not, we've established we need to find out if the request was made in time, but is there a clock ticking on us as to when we have to make the decision to grant the extension?
No, apparently not.
Even after it expires?
Yeah, that's the funny thing about this, that you could continue on, and they only have a year from the time that they, of the date when they, the approval was, when the decision was filed, the three-year timeframe total for starting to work. But you don't have a, you don't have a time limit on your review of the extension request?
Okay, so the request for the board to get more information, better understanding.
Right.
Assuming the applicant agrees that that makes sense, we should continue, I think.
So what is it the applicant's going to bring back to us at the next meeting?
Well, I think.
Before the next meeting.
Well, before the next meeting.
So, in summary to that, so partly from Mr. Buckland, I think, and partly from the applicant, what is the process for notifying the board of a transition?
Ownership.
Of rights, or its ownership? So what is that process? Has the process been followed? And then, request from you is, how do we affirm that the legal obligations of the previous permit have, you've assumed them? How do we confirm that?
Yeah, a document of some sort stated.
Something that we can say, okay, they're going to do everything, our conditions and so forth.
And also that there is a creditworthy entity backing up these obligations.
Right.
That was my point about the special permit runs with the land and not with the owner. It doesn't matter who the owner is, they have to follow that special permit and all the requirements of it.
Oh, okay, so, but there still is, I thought you said there was still an obligation with, associated with the transfer that the board had to get involved in, or being approved or not.
You can, you can approve the transfer, but the special permit runs, the conditions of the special permit and the requirements of it run with the land, not with the owner. So it plays out that.
That makes sense.
It applies to whoever is the owner.
And I guess I would argue, recognizing that for the, in the board's exercise of its discretion in approving this or not, that some additional information be provided by the project developer and operator.
Have you actually reviewed the special permit?
Yes.
Oh, okay. You've actually read the conditions?
I did read all the conditions. And happy to provide documentation of all of those changes. I know that it's a lot to take under wing at this point. I'm with New Leaf Energy, which is just the development side of Borrego. We used to be part of Borrego. They divested the development company. So we're still the same organization, but we've become a standalone company.
So who is the applicant at this point for this?
The applicant was likely Borrego. I'd have to review the information.
That is who the applicant was.
Yes.
Who is the applicant now?
New Leaf Energy is what Borrego has become. The asset, there's a contract for purchase of the asset. For 27 Charge Pond Road, it will be owned and operated by a company called DSD. They're out of New York. The 150 Tohannet site will be owned and operated by a company called REA, which was formerly Sunraise. And they're based in Massachusetts.
So those folks are the ones who really will assume the obligations?
Ultimately, yes. They will, they will take over. So there's documentation there. Each project has a project company that is the actual owner of the asset, and that's what's transferred to the future operator and maintenance and operation entity.
So, Mr. Chairman, perhaps if we could get a presentation that lays all this out for both projects, and then the associated documentation signed by the associated people saying, we're going to abide by this?
Certainly, we can provide that. And I'll bring the right legal party from our side that can explain all the legalities of how all of that's transferred.
And in the meantime, we'll determine if the, at least the first one, met the cutoff. If he missed the cutoff, would we have the opportunity to waive that? Doesn't say that in the bylaw.
It's a, it's a state law.
Okay.
And it's a zoning bylaw. And I don't think you can change it otherwise.
Okay, so we need to, at least for the first one, to see if they met the date.
Yeah.
And the dates that are in my letter are based on what was written in the decision. I'm not sure that I saw an actual stamp from the clerk's office. Sometimes those things get delayed, but this board is very good about transmitting it to the clerk. So that was the day after the vote, and that's normally how things happen. So it's part assumption on my part as well, without knowing exactly when it was filed with the clerk.
I think we should have, so, Mr. Chair, you asked what would we be looking for. Confirmation of what the dates of record are that we're measuring the request against, and then a presentation from New Leaf about the new ownership structure and confirmation that.
That they're absorbing, assuming all the conditions of the special permit.
That seems to cover the questions, right?
I think so.
But also, what about the other permits that have, I mean, there are people under construction right now.
You mean other projects?
Yes.
I think, I think, well, we have another one right behind, and I think the first question we'll ask them is the same question.
The projects of ours that are under construction were all approved by the utility prior to this group study, so they weren't affected by it. So that's how they bypassed this part of the process. If I may, I do have one question, specifically about the expiration date. Because if I'm reading your bylaw correctly, I think it also may include the 20-day appeal period that follows filing with the clerk. So I think that we're well within that 30 days because of that.
That's what we've asked Mr. Buckland to.
Right.
So we should have all the dates before us, so you have the same dates we're using, and we all know, as well as the public.
The one thing that I would ask, any kind of correspondence, presentation of documents, we all have lives above and beyond planning board.
No, that's okay.
So, I mean, I'm looking at the date of your, of your letter, and it was five days ago.
I wasn't really expecting to be in front of you this quickly, but Mr. Buckland put it on the agenda very quickly. So I'm happy to answer additional questions, provide additional information as necessary for the board.
The only thing that I ask is, is that anything that you plan on presenting to the board for consideration, that we get it well ahead of the scheduled meeting, so that we can all have time to digest it, research, rather than me sitting here reading through that study while we're chatting?
Certainly, that's not optimal.
No, it's not, no.
All right, so.
So I would, well, we certainly, well.
I was going to move that we continue, but, or not table, table until, we can't, it's not a public hearing, we don't have to continue.
Right, yeah, I would entertain a motion that we table this discussion for.
Until the 17th, or the first week in October, or November. What does the 17th look like right now, Ken?
17.
The 27th? Or the 17th of October you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
That day. We have the, the only thing we have on for sure is the Bay Point release of covenant and bond, tripartite agreement.
But it's all that's on that day so far?
Yeah, that's all that's, that's there so far.
Can you, can you be prepared for the 17th, knowing that we want to see documentation for review no later than the 10th? And that would be like the latest?
We would, we would certainly try for two weeks prior to. We would certainly try for two weeks prior to that date, so that you have plenty of time.
Yes, little light evening reading, that'd be great.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we table discussion on this, these two items, 150 Tohonton and 27 Charge Pond Road, until October 17th, with the understanding that the applicant will provide additional data, and that Mr. Buckland will get us some clarifying information around the dates.
Second?
Here we have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All those in agreement, say aye. Chair?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you for your time, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Okay.
Just a question, Mike?
Yeah. For those who may or may not have come to listen to continued public hearings for Zero Route 25, 33-1 Wareham PV1 LLC, MAP 115-1000, Proposed Ground-Mounted Solar Energy Generation Facility, that applicant has requested a continuance. They won't be here tonight, so we do need to decide.
You have to...
When were we notified of that?
Actually, I did see, well, September 22nd. We got a whole four days on that one.
Yeah, the reason is, is the plan, excuse me, the zoning board did not rule on their variance.
Yeah, they're going to rule on that on Wednesday.
Okay, so then, would we continue it to the, do we have time on the 3rd?
They've requested that we move it to the meeting of 10:10, which we're not meeting on.
Which is either the 3rd or the 17th now?
Right.
Right.
So I would move it to the 17th.
Yep.
Do we have time to do that? We're not running into any...
Yeah, no, that's fine, the 17th will be fine.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion, then, that we continue the public hearing for site plan review, Zero Route 25, at the applicant's request, to the meeting of October 17th. Do I have said motion?
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor, Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl? Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So move that to the 17th, or these days, we're going to get this stuff done.
You probably want to just move this one to, just tell everybody we're going to move that.
In the interest of keeping things moving along for the folks in attendance, we're going to take the continued public hearing for Article for Town Meeting Amendment to zoning bylaw Article 13, Section 1381, and we're going to move that further down the agenda tonight, so that we can dive right into 12-22, Wareham, Mass. 3 LLC, 91 and 101 Farring Hill Road. Do we have someone from the applicant to talk to us about that?
Good evening. Rich Chabazinski with Atlantic Design Engineers, with the engineers for the project, and Joe Shanahan from Con Ed, who is typically here, had medical issues over the weekend, and he's in the hospital, and he'll, nothing major. He'll be back at the next hearings and stuff like that. But he sends his apologies and wanted me to fill in for him as best I can tonight. And indicated to just give you kind of a summary of a few things that have been going on since the last hearing, so... And, you know, we fully expect to be, you know, to continue to the next meeting, hopefully the October 3rd meeting, to go forward. And Joe will be here for that meeting in person, so... So just in general, just to give you a breakdown of what's happened since the last meeting, which was August 8th. Joe Shanahan from Con Ed, he had submitted a memorandum that indicated, addressed a bunch of the items that had been brought up at that particular meeting. I won't go into the details of that, and I'll save that for Joe to go through, unless you have any questions on that memo that I can answer, I'll try to. But basically, he's submitted that and addressed the items, several of the items that came up at the last couple meetings. But in addition to that, we've been working with, you know, us and Con Ed have been working with the towns' consultants, Mr. Rowley and Mr. Pierce from Horsley &amp; Witten, on just making adjustments, edits, changes to the drawings, to the site plans, to the calculations. And having, actually, we had several meetings with your consultants to review the changes as we are progressing through them, so...
Do we have, not to interrupt, do we have revised drawings? Is that what these are supposed to be?
No, you don't have revised drawings. There were revised drawings, they were done, that's part of a working document for the group that was, that he's talking about now. But it was not submitted officially to the board for review, so you don't have one.
So these are...
These are the old ones.
These are window dressing? I really don't need to be handling these, is that what you're saying?
That's right.
Yeah, those are probably the last submittal from the end of July, which was the last official submittal. Since then, we've been working on plans, calculations, going back and forth with comments and meetings with your consultants to hopefully refine the plans to the point where they're satisfied prior to us, you know, making an official presentation and re-submittal to the town. That kind of is the goal, as what we've been working on over the last month and a half or so. And I know Neil Price is here from Horsley &amp; Witten also. But in terms of anything further to discuss, I guess one of the issues that I'd like to at least give you an overview on is some of the, one of the primary issues everyone's had concerns with is what's happening during construction. When the process of clearing trees and grading and machinery get on the site, what's being done to control stormwater, control erosion during that particular process? So we've worked up a, what we call a construction phasing and erosion control plan. Just show you a drawing that we've put together. And also have a draft document, which will be made part of the submittal when we refine it to that degree. But I do have copies of it that I'd like to at least give you to follow through, to help follow my presentation, if you will. So I have, let's see, three, four, five, six. We have seven copies, if that's good enough? And again, you know, again, these aren't official. It's just kind of an outline for you to follow my presentation. And I'll grab a board right now while you're panning those out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this a good location for the presentation board, I guess? Great, thank you. So this is the overall aerial view of the project that you've seen before. It's the same presentation board that we've had in front of you on a number of occasions. And so, as I mentioned earlier, hearing comments from not only your consultants, but from the board and from the audience, that there was, you know, some major concerns with disturbing of soil, clearing trees, and how to control stormwater and erosion during those processes in order to protect Farring Hill Road and the abutting neighbors along Farring Hill Road and adjacent to the property to the, on all sides. So what we looked at is a phasing plan, which, again, is a work in progress, but... And this is a colored-up version of the eventual plan that will be submitted to you for approval. It would be added to the site plan set of drawings that you have. So what you see here is the project broken up into actually five, six, five phases of clearing and grading and of construction for the site. And I'll go through the scheme of what we envisioned for the construction. And we colored up the different phases, just to make it clearer for you to look at on the screen and on the board here. And what you have in your narrative that we're working on is a description of each of those phases and the items of work that would be completed during that phase. So just to go through the color scheme, Phase 1 is in green. Phase 2 is in yellow. Phase 3 is in the orange. Phase 4 is outlined in pink. And Phase 5 is the, is the blue color on your screen and on the plans here, so... And just to briefly go through what we've envisioned here, so Phase 1 would be construction of the access road coming in off of Farring Hill Road. We would utilize this first pad area as a laydown area, and then, stormwater basin number 2. That would be what we would consider as part of Phase 1. We wanted to get Phase, this basin constructed first out of all of them because of the sensitivity to the neighbors down on Farring Hill Road and to the south and southeast of the project. That seems to be where the primary concern is. So during this phase, and I should note that what we tried to do is break up the phases into areas that are less than five acres in size. The EPA, in their Construction General Permit, has guidelines for how much land area should be cleared all at one time without going into a secondary phase and without it being restored or somehow stabilized. So using those as a guideline here, what we did, as you'll notice, is break up all the phases into less than five acres at a time. And we start with the outer perimeter of the project to be able to install erosion controls and stormwater measures around the perimeter of the project first, before we even get into clearing any of the other phases of the site. So the way our program's written here is that we would, on Phase 1, we would go in and install perimeter erosion control measures along this phase, and then go in, clear trees, remove stumps, install the tracking pad at the entrance, install the swale that's down at the entrance to handle stormwater from the ex, to handle any runoff from the access road. And then we'd be constructing the stormwater basin, basin number 2, in that first phase. And that would be utilized and constructed as a sediment basin also. It would be, there's, it would be designed, and there's details that we'll provide on the new set of plans, to design it as and have it be a sediment basin during construction with riser pipes and a lot of storage capacity for sediment, for any kind of erosion that happens during future phases that might make its way down into this basin. And then, that area would all be stabilized with a temporary cover crop that would basically allow it to be a fast-growing seed, to get some stabilization of this phase before we even proceeded on the next phase.
Excuse me, does that, does that, those inside lines on Phase 1 and Phase 2 line up with the location of the fence?
Yes, yes, and, well, yes and no. There are certain, there is some grading that's outside the fence, but primarily, it's the fence line. But if you notice, like on basin 2, the fence is right here up along the berm. But there's some grading and outlet structures beyond the fence. So it'll, some of the work will be beyond the fence line. But that's primarily the slopes and some of the stormwater outlets, such as up here and up here, where there's outlets from the basins that are beyond the fence line. It's all within the limit of any siltation fences or any siltation controls. These dark dashed lines not only represent the limits of the phasing, but limits of erosion control measures that we'll be putting along each, at the down gradient end of each of those phases. So, you know, once Phase 1 is completed and seeded with a cover crop for stabilization, then we move on to the second phase, which is basically the continuation of the access road around the site and putting in the other two basins on the northeast side. And again, those will be designed and constructed as temporary sediment basins to allow for any future sediment erosion from the site that possibly would occur, that would get into these basins and be stored before any discharge or anything off-site. And so that would be, Phase 1 and 2 gives you a full perimeter that's cleared, stabilized, erosion control measures in place, and stormwater measures in place before any of the rest of the site is even touched. So this whole area in here will still be fully vegetated and untouched while all this other work is going on. That is a different way of constructing these projects, as you know, from probably a lot of them that you've seen in a lot of other construction sites in place, is normally the entire perimeter's erosion control is put in, and then the entire site's cleared all at once. So the developers know that this is a little unorthodox, but they've committed to doing it in this manner, based on how much concern there is about this process, so... Phase 3, we discussed and talked about having Phase 3 be at the top of the hill, basically, which is right here. So this area would be part of Phase 3, and what the work included in there is to just clear trees, stump, clear things out, install this access road that goes in from the staging area, and also install erosion control measures at the limit of that phase. So all that work would be included, and then, again, this area would be seeded, stabilized, before proceeding to the next phase. And so what you would have, once that phase is completed, you would still have a band of natural vegetation between that phase and the stormwater basins. Again, that will help slow down runoff, it'll help with erosion and sediment, because it's, again, a natural, all this will remain natural, even while Phase 3 is constructed. And that's, again, we feel is a unique way of handling the erosion, potential for erosion and sediment on the site. and sediment on the site. And proceeding down, Phase Four is just, we're proceeding down the hill a little bit farther. Phase Four is about four acres in size, and it handles, it'll be basically these areas here in pink. Erosion control will be installed at the down gradient levels of those phases. The site, again, would be cleared, whatever grading is needed in those areas would be completed, and then, again, the site, that, those portions of the site would be stabilized before proceeding to the next phase. So, even after Phase Four, there's still a band of natural vegetation here in this blue, between any of the sites that are, any of the site that's been cleared, there's this band of natural vegetation between that and the stormwater basins. So, there's still a level of protection there and here before any of the down gradient receptors, such as the wetlands or the residences down to the southeast. And then, finally, well, the next phase would be the Phase Five, which would be the remaining land that would be cleared. And, again, the first thing we would do is install erosion control limit, at the down gradient limits of that. And so, as you can see by the heavy dark lines, you're going to have erosion control measures, one, two, three, four, you're going to have four layers of erosion control measures prior to your, any, prior to the limits of work. There'll be one at each phase of work at the lower end of those. And then you'll have a project that's temporarily stabilized, you'll have the sediment basins that are in place just in case during the next phases, which is installing the panels and installing underground electric, installing your utility pads and everything like that. If there's any disruption that causes any erosion, that'll be caught still within these sediment basins. And then, finally, in some of the, in the future phases, we would remove the sediment from these basins, clean them out entirely, install all the final piping and swale systems leading into it, and then totally re-vegetate the site again afterwards with a permanent seeding of everything. And we had submitted a seeding protocol with different seed mixes for the temporary cover and for the permanent seeding, and that would, that would be one of the last things we would do was repair any type of ruts or construction areas that were disturbed during installation of the panels and utility things. We would repair those, any issues that came up during that, and then, again, seed the entire project afterwards for finalization. So, that kind of is what we're working on. What we're, what we discussed at the last meeting with the consultants was to insert into this program here some suggested times for inspections that would be completed either by us or by your consultant. We, you know, we can open up to either, some discussions on that, but, you know, at a certain phases of each construction and during each phase, there should be some inspections that we would recommend being completed and a report being provided to the board as to the status. You know, usually, those are done when initial erosion control measures are installed. Someone goes out and inspects them to make sure they're installed properly. You know, and then at the various stages of each phase, there should be some further inspections completed and reports provided to the town. And so, we were, we would, what we'll end up doing is probably incorporating those inspection schedules into this document before we officially submit it. So, so that's basically what I wanted to present to you, to show you what we've been working on and our thought process to handle some of the, some of the more common questions we kept hearing from, from the board and from, from your consultants and from the audience. So, we think it's a very comprehensive plan, and we'll definitely provide some measure of security, I guess, is a way to put it, for the, for the board and the neighbors during construction. So, at that point, I guess I will leave it open for questions, discussions, or anything that's on your mind from here forward.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I have one or two.
Well, I guess we'll continue around the board this way. Sherri?
Okay. First question, do you have a timeframe for these various phases?
Not, not for each phase, no. I think the applicant has indicated that he feels the actual construction is for the four to six months, I believe, for the, for the site to be constructed. I can clarify that. I can't remember exactly the numbers he was given, but, but we, and again, each phase, I don't have a timeframe for each phase, no, but we can come up with one if we'd like.
Okay. All right, that, I think that was...
Six to nine. I'm sorry, I just was informed that there was, it was a six to nine month construction process, so. And some of these phases will take longer than the others to do, so we can, we can make an effort to give you a timeframe for each phase, yep.
Okay. And in Charlie's notes and in your presentation, you've talked a little bit about seed mixes and real efforts to use vegetation to address some of the erosion issues. Just want to make sure that this is an area of knowledge that you all are proficient in, and that this is something that you can reasonably provide us recommendations on.
Yes, well, yes.
In the field, I would invite you to...
Neil, if you'd like to come up.
Sure.
Two field questions, that would be great.
Well, we've reached out to a company that supplies seed mix to a number of developers and contractors in the area, Ernst Seed Mix, and they basically make these seed mixes for various types of construction processes, and they, they're the suppliers of these. So, we reached out to them to recommend a type that would work for both the temporary cover and the final stabilization process. So, we took their recommendations and sent them to Neil's company, and he, they've done some review and actually have some recommendations on that, so, which we'll incorporate into the final mix that we, that we submit to you. But I'll let Neil talk to that, if you could.
And as you address that, Neil, if you could also address the question of this particular soil and the seed mixes in this particular soil, I think there have been questions raised about this being an unusual type of soil, and I think it would be helpful, at least to me, to know that there is somebody looking at the combination of the soil and the seed mixes so that what is, what is being proposed will actually grow and, you know, have the tenacity to stay there.
So, with regard to the seed mixes, there have been two submitted to date with a third one about to come. So, the, the, based on our recommendations and discussion with Ernst, they supplied a first seed mix that our botanist landscape architects reviewed and thought was essentially ideal for the site in terms of erosion control protection and habitat and that kind of stuff. Then, I believe, perhaps coming from a comment from someone on this board, there, about some of those species being over four feet high, there was concern about trying to get those lower so they wouldn't interfere with the functionality of the solar panels. So, the applicant reached out to Ernst and a revised seeding plan was submitted, and we reviewed that, and while it was much shorter with the taller species being about 18 inches, we felt it was lacking, both in its ability for erosion control and for habitat quality. So, we made recommendations back for the applicant to reach out to Ernst again and to raise the maximum height of plants to three feet, with the thinking that would find the sweet spot between habitat, habitat quality, erosion control, and still staying below the, the actual panel height. And we're waiting to see that, that final seed mix to come in. With regard to the soil for the seed mixes, I will make a point of talking with our landscape architects about that. I don't believe it'll be an issue. In fact, I think it is beneficial that the type of till soils that are here on the site should hold water better and better support growth than would sandier soils, but I will make sure to get their recommendation on that.
Thank you. In some of the correspondence and in Charlie's notes, there's discussion of monitoring wells and the question of whether there should or would be monitoring wells offsite. I'm not sure I understand exactly where you all have ended up on that, but I'm curious, since it seems that you reached out and didn't, didn't receive any, any answers from the neighbors on location of monitoring wells on their property. Is, is there an advantage in having the wells on the neighbor's property, and is that something that we should ask for more help on from the neighbors?
Mm-hmm.
I'll address that if you want.
So, you're correct about that. We've, we discussed that at our last internal meeting, and there, there have always been three monitoring wells proposed, and there still will be, two of them will be new, one of them will be one of the existing ones. One of the new ones will be on the applicant's property, and the third one is proposed to be in the town right-of-way along Farring Hill Road, very close to all of the neighbors of concern, and the railroad grade, you know, and essentially equivalent spot as what we would have had at one of the neighbor's properties. So, we are, we, I don't believe the applicant got a response from whoever at the town is responsible, someone at DPW, I imagine, but I think the, the hope is that the town would approve this monitoring well in the right-of-way along Farring Hill Road so that we could get all three wells installed properly at acceptable locations, and then just skip the requiring private property permission for it altogether.
And Charlie, you're comfortable that this is a reasonable solution?
Yeah, that'll work. Putting it on the properties or the project side of Farring Hill Road, there's no problem with that, it'd probably give you a little bit more advance notice anyway, rather than having it on the property across the street. The new well will be just to the southeast of the access road. There is one well that is close to Farring Hill Road now that would have to be moved slightly. If that one can be put in within the right-of-way, it could be right up basically to the lot line, because there's a piece of property that is between the subject site and Farring Hill Road that is not a part of the project. So, it would be difficult for the applicant to get approval to put the well on that particular piece of land. So, if, if they can get approval to put it within the right-of-way, and it could be right up to the lot line, it would be well beyond the pavement, there would be no reason for it to be disturbed, and they don't stick up more than that far anyway. So, that would be the third one. So, it would actually give you a triangle of three wells in that southwest corner. And with that, I think it will give you advance notice as to what's happening to the groundwater, and it's the type of monitoring that would be done on a regular, daily basis, actually, by an automated system. So, if anything took place, either over the long time or as a result of a significant storm, in a short duration, you'd be able to measure that. And it would give you an idea as to what's happening on the site as a result of the construction. One of the things that perhaps is important to note is that those wells should go in prior to any construction so that you have a baseline from which to measure. You don't want to put the wells in after things have started, because then you won't have a good idea as to what the existing conditions are before any changes take place. So, as a part of the construction sequencing, I think Rich has done a good job of putting that out, but I think it should include the monitoring wells really upfront from anything else that happens there.
Okay, thank you.
We have a draft monitoring plan that will be in our final letter, in which I've recommended those wells be installed three months prior to the start of any construction work.
Okay, thank you. Now, I did notice as well in Charlie's notes that there is reference to insurance being purchased and maintained over the life of the project for damages offsite. Did I get that right?
Correct.
Would be helpful to me to understand more about the insurance so that we can assess sort of the effectiveness of it. I know that, that the planning board is very concerned about the impact of this project on the neighbors. You all know that, and you have done, I would say, very diligent work in, in addressing the concerns that we all have raised and that the public has raised. It would add some comfort, I think, if we could understand that there was insurance in place to address issues that may be unforeseen but nevertheless affect the neighbors. So, if you could share a summary of that with us, I certainly would appreciate that.
Yep, I will let Joe Shanahan know that, and he'll be able to provide that information at the next hearing.
Okay, great.
Hopefully.
And while you're talking with him, he did include some information in his attachment be on addressing fire issues. I'm assuming that the, the letter provided by the fire department laying out a whole bunch of requirements is going to be made part of the conditions for this project. And I would ask also that we make sure to say that if requirements change over time, that those changes will be captured and addressed by the applicant as well.
Mm-hmm.
And this is in particular about the battery storage piece of it.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we've talked a lot about your level of certainty and comfort on this, and I raised the question, at least in an email, about, you know, multiple events happening in short succession, and I know that you've done your best to do conservative studies and to try to capture sort of reasonable, reasonably foreseeable, and even, you know, some unreasonably foreseeable scenarios. What, given what is being discussed now, what is the level of your comfort recognizing that this, this could have some very major impacts on the neighbors if, if all of us are wrong?
I will, I mean, it's hard for me to answer that, because as you have intimated, there's, you can never predict with certainty what will happen, and the right confluence of factors can, can cause problems. But I will say that the, the set of, we'll call it, you know, the, I guess, the cliche is belts and suspenders, so you maybe add some, there might be two belts and two suspenders in this one. I think it's more than most projects I've, I've seen in terms of both the level of conservatism and the analysis and the safeguards built into the construction process. So, within the amount of certainty that one can ever discuss these sort of projects, I do feel comfortable that we have evaluated this project as fully as is ever done for construction projects of any, of any type, and more so than would your average housing project likely, and the potential impacts for this would be less than would be the case for an average housing project. So, within all those limits, I do feel pretty good about where we're at with this.
And one, at one point, Joe Shanahan talked about, I think the word he used was you would sign off on it?
I won't be signing off on anything, no, thank you.
That confused me, because you're rendering your expert opinion and providing us with your view of what will happen in various scenarios, but I didn't think you would be signing off on it.
I will not, no.
Now, I listened to the Conservation Commission hearing that you appeared before. Some questions there were raised about... Some questions there were raised about erosion and flows into the wetlands. Do you have any water quality concerns? I know we have talked about PFAS, and the applicant is certifying that they are not, you know, bringing any PFAS-containing material onto the site. Do you have any other water quality concerns from replacement of this wooded area with the solar project?
Well, it's clear. You know, forested land cover is the optimal land cover for protecting water quality in general. So whenever you replace forest with anything, there's a degradation in water quality that goes on. This particular case, I expect the degradation to be less than, for example, most residential or commercial subdivisions that would have more impervious cover, less grass cover, and the more introduction of vehicles and other sources of contamination along the way. There's no wastewater involved with this. There's nothing going on on the site other than wildlife that's going to generate much in the way of bacteria or pathogens or nutrient concerns. So again, it's not as good as the forest, but it's better than most developments. So I do not, and so I have no significant concerns with the result having to do with water quality and the impacts to drinking water wells in the perimeter. You do mention PFAS. There's PFAS, and, you know, there are other emerging contaminants that we're just kind of getting a handle on as a society now. We spent a great deal of time discussing in these internal meetings that Rich mentioned, and I spent a great deal of time working on a plan for PFAS monitoring and discussing it with our licensed site professional at Horsie Witten. Ultimately, the applicant has decided not to go with that, and I can try to explain why. So there was a question about monitoring in the groundwater wells, and I don't think it's a good idea because there is, groundwater is separated from, if the panels were to have PFAS and to be a source of PFAS, the groundwater wells would be separated in both space and time from that source. So while PFAS is forever, it does tend to bind to organic carbon like soil. That's why they use granular activated carbon for treatment of PFAS at drinking water wells. So some of that PFAS would get stuck to the soils. It'd be likely a very long time before any PFAS that was generated on site would show up in these wells, and you'd be relying on luck of the draw that one of these three wells would be in the direct line of influence from that. So if you wanted to actually monitor post-construction, the stormwater basins themselves would be a better source for doing sampling. But at that point in time, all of these panels are already installed. So we had a lot of discussions about can you sample the panels before they're installed? And this does get done. I don't have no real knowledge about panels specifically, but for other, like artificial turf, for example, our LSPs worked on a lot of these. And there were another big item of contention in the world, in our world today, that frequently have PFAS in them. And frequently, despite being certified to not have PFAS, they do have PFAS in them. So there was discussion about getting material from the manufacturer of these panels and submitting that for testing just to make sure that the certified PFAS-free is actually So that is an option. In discussion with the applicant, it sounds like it's unclear. That becomes very, it's easy to do if all of the panels get manufactured at one place at one time with the same set of materials, so you can get a couple of samples that are representative of all the panels. It's very hard to do if the opposite is true, and there are hundreds of batches of panels being made. Then you would be doing very expensive sampling for hundreds of times to try to do this. So that is why the applicant has chosen to not pursue that as an option, I guess live with the risk and have this bond that I think he has recommended associated with it. None of this is really my realm to decide if it's right or wrong, but for context, that's where this discussion has gone.
Okay. That's interesting, something for us to think about that I think we're not completely aware of. One last thing, Rich, if you could take it to the applicant as well. This will be completely predictable based on our earlier conversation. If Joe could come back to us and talk to us about the queue and where you all, unless you know the answers to these questions. I looked on the queue, the ISO New England Transmission queue. I did not see something that I could identify as this project. Sounds like it could be caught up in the group of projects that is being, is under the, in the process of being studied. And so I think some more information on that would be helpful to us.
Okay. I definitely, I will reach out to Joe and have him address that. I personally don't, we weren't involved in the interconnection process, so I don't know whether or not we're in that study, to be honest. So I'll have, that'll be another thing on my list for Joe to answer. I know they've had discussions and meetings with Everson Source throughout the project, so I'll find out where they stand on that.
Okay. And there is an interconnection agreement attached to the application. It looks a little bit odd to me. It looks like it might be an example as opposed to an actual interconnection agreement. So, you know, I'd be curious about that as well.
Okay. Yep. I will find out.
I'm done for now.
Very good. Thank you, Sheri. Mike?
I'll sit for now.
Okay. So I had some questions about your phasing, and maybe it's spelled out in this that we just got, and I just haven't had a chance to look at it. But just so I'm certain that I'm understanding, phase one and phase two, you'll come in and clear and do some construction so that the retention basins are there. And then phases three, four, and five will be a step-by-step clearing of the land and planting of a preliminary seed mix?
Yes.
To give it time to establish, do three, and then it's getting established while you're doing four, et cetera?
Exactly.
And then the construction takes place, the installation of the panels?
Yes. After the five phases that you see here is basically to prep the site.
Yes.
And afterwards, then we would install the panels, the fencing, electrical, all the others.
So the installation of the panels is not, according to these phases, that it happens?
Right. Yeah, if you look through, yeah, I'm sorry.
Through those, the phases of clearing the land?
Right, yeah. If you look through the document.
Yeah, I think this will spell it out for me. I just haven't had a chance to comb through.
This shows phase one through five, but the document has phase six, seven, eight, and nine, which is the actual construction of the solar system, the cleaning out of the basins, and finalizing the construction of the basins, and installing the diversion trench that was proposed as part of the stormwater management system. So all those would occur after the site's been prepped.
And just quickly, there's a preliminary seed mix, and then there's, that's for stabilizing the site, and then there's a final one. Will you remove the plants from the initial one to put in the final seed mix?
No, they'll just be, just be kind of a...
On top of it?
Yes, overseeding, I guess they call it.
And the six-inch loam, is that an average depth of the loam, or is that a minimum?
I think we've listed it as a minimum, yeah.
All right. That's all I've got for now.
You all set? Tom?
Hi. Thank you. I have a, I'm intrigued by the phased approach. Does the phased approach, particularly with phase one and two, now give us the opportunity to establish the screening buffer early in the project rather than waiting until the end? So we could plant all the vegetative buffer around the outside as part of phase one and two, allow it to get established and begin growing even before we begin working on the internal of the site?
Yes. You're talking about the proposed plantings along...
Yeah, the screening buffers, all the stuff to deal with line of sight and all that stuff. So we could get a head start on that by doing that as part of phases one and two.
Yes, we could. We could, that's a good point. We can install, include that under phase one and two.
Well, yeah, because two, I only picked two because it extends up the...
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be another improvement to the site impact. And then give a six to nine months of growth before we even begin putting in the panels.
True, understood. Yeah, that works. That's a good plan. Yep.
Okay.
Can I jump in with a question, a follow-up question to exactly that topic? We talked about this at the last time that we met. Along the southern border, which is phase two, and it backs up to the residence that's there, the drawing that we've got in front of us, which is, I know it's being updated, but there's a 20-foot separation between the rows of arborvitae and the panels, if I understand this correctly. And the comment that I made at the last meeting was that 20 feet seems awfully close for trees that are fairly, pretty tall, the existing trees, the pines, that they're going to cast shadows if there's only 20 feet plus or minus of distance between them and the panels. And I just want to make sure that the applicant doesn't come back before us and say, "We need to top the trees behind that house." So just want to put that out there.
No, I understand the comment, and, you know, based on, especially in this particular area here, I can't imagine that they would be trying to come back to you at a certain point in time and ask you for additional clearing or anything like that. I believe when they lay out the panels and give us that layout, they take into account shading effects and inefficiencies there, so...
Yeah, it was just that one along that southern property line.
Yeah, and that red.
That backs up to the residence, right along there.
Sure.
And it gets a little, the tree line gets a little close, it seems to me, that it would be casting shadows on the first row of panels, making them kind of not very functional.
Mm-hmm. Sheri asked too many questions, so I don't have anything left. So I, thank you for the buffer question.
Thank you.
I have no question, just a comment. I think it's a great job. It's a great concept. I hope it works well. The only comment is, this is kind of from left field. On another committee I serve on, I'm serving with Sandy Slavens, Chairman of Conservation. She doesn't feel she's getting everything that we're getting and in a timely manner. For us to make our ultimate decision, we have to get their response to development. So I'd like you to look into making sure they get everything that we get on a timely matter, a timely order. Thank you.
The only pushback I have on that is they've been invited multiple times to come. Sandy was invited to come tonight, and there is a representative of the Conservation Commission here tonight. So, well, I mean, you know, it's, you've got to work together here.
I agree. I agree. It's why, you know, we can't make decisions if they make their decisions. They need everything. Your mic. On a timely, timely...
And just for the board's information, whenever we have resubmitted revised plans and calculations to you, we've also submitted those to the Conservation Commission. So the set of plans you have from the end of July, they have also?
Okay. Thank you.
And when we make this next revision submittal, they'll be getting copies also.
What about what you presented tonight? They had that?
No, because again, when we mentioned this, this is more of discussion items as opposed to actual formal submission of revised plans to you.
I think that would be real information that they would like.
Mm-hmm.
Would help.
Especially the phasing.
Yep.
I have a few questions. Sheri did steal most of them, though. Neil, you mentioned the six to nine months. Is that total project, or is that just land clearing and stabilization?
So I'm only passing information that Mr. Shanahan, I asked this question, Mr. Shanahan told me six to nine months, and I think that's total project, but...
I believe he was indicating a total project, yes.
Project. Do you think, and, I mean, six to nine months, that means you're using every nanosecond of growing season available to you?
Yeah.
Because we've had issues in the past with other projects, not necessarily solar, where the proponent didn't do a good job of getting seed on the ground in a timely fashion, and it goes through the winter and the seed never germinates, and we end up with a mess on our hands. So that would be, that would be a real concern of mine, and, you know, a potential start date for construction, if it was approved, would have to be considered very carefully to make sure that we get seed on the ground in the beginning, and then we have time to get seed on the ground toward the end so that we're, we don't end up with a mud puddle coming down the side of the hill into these people's backyards.
Mr. Chairman, a follow-on question. So the applicant, through you to the applicant, you proposed various inspections. So can I assume that an inspection of phase one would confirm that the ground cover was established per Mr. King's question before we move to phase two? Would that be part of the inspection process?
Yeah, I believe that would be one of the inspection, I mean, we would have one at the start of it to make sure the erosion controls are all set.
Right.
And then there'd be one at the end to just confirm that it's been built according to the plans for that phase, yes.
So then we could, as we progress, we could confirm that each phase is stabilized?
Right. It has successfully germinated seed on the ground.
It doesn't have to necessarily be three feet tall, but it...
My concern is, is...
No, I'm supporting you. I'm saying we would want to have those inspections.
I understand. I'm just, you know, you spray seed on the ground after you complete phase one or phase two, whatever the case might be, and 30 days later, you have peach fuzz. Peach fuzz has no root system. It isn't stabilizing anything.
Right.
So where do we determine that what you've sprayed on the ground and is in fact growing is actually useful?
So we had similar conversations in some of these planning meetings internally here between the applicant and the town's two consultants. And I believe, again, not to put words in Mr. Shanahan's mouth, but he understood the concerns and was willing to have the timeline be extended, you know, that it might even be beyond nine months. He was, you know, acceptable to having, aware and acceptable of the issue of establishing plants and growth and would work around that, and I think is willing to have conditions in the permit that, you know, once Rich and Atlantic come up with this more refined construction sequence and maybe when we would know when the project might start, that would better inform, like, when might planting be able to occur given that timeframe? But he seemed flexible in understanding of this issue.
So we could assume based on that, that the first pylon wouldn't be driven into the ground to support solar panels till we had a successfully growing meadow?
That would be my understanding, that the, right, the, all five geographic phases would be...
Growing actively.
Growing, yeah.
Doing what they're supposed to be doing, keeping the soil where it belongs.
Right.
Okay.
So Mike, if I understand what you just said, so in six to nine months, you're going to have a stabilized area that you're going to do your construction on. Now, you said the project's going to take six to nine months.
Again, I'm only acting, passing on the information that I was given by Mr. Shanahan. So, and the second information that he was flexible on timing. So I think he is committed to the first thing you said about having a stable site and that the concept was to have the entire, all five geographic phases stabilized before the panel started being installed. Actually, that might not be correct. Rich, would you, would the ability be there to start installing panels on the earlier phases once they were stabilized prior to all of the phases being stabilized?
I mean, that's a definite possibility, like, for phase three. The first phase has to do with installing the perimeter and stormwater measures. But phase three is where we're actually getting into the construction that includes the array. That's part of the solar array. So if they... So if they cleared and started construction up here, I mean, you still have these phases that are completely wooded between the construction site and, and the stormwater measures. So, you know, they could start installing panels and other things in here with really no effect downstream because you'd have, you'd have a full wooded buffer between the construction site and these, these measures. So, I mean, ideally, I mean, you could do that. Whether or not work, that works from the contractor's standpoint, where he's got different types of machinery coming on and at the same point in time. I'm not sure. I'll have to talk to maybe their contractors and see what, what best would work. But it is a possibility that they could do that and still have no effect downstream.
I, I think as long as everybody agrees that during the inspection process, you know, when Phase One is done and somebody comes out to inspect, whoever that might be, that their opinion of the quality of the growth and the root system and the fact that it's going to do what it's supposed to do will be the defining factor. The next phase doesn't happen until that opinion is solidified with fact. Yes, we have good growth. Yes, we have some, some decent root coverage. Now the next phase will go. So if, you know, if the contractor is planning on six to nine and ends up being 12 to 18 because the grass won't grow, because you're trying to plant it in November, that's the way it'll be, you know? The inspections will be the, the end, the end comment as to who, you know, whether we move forward with the next phase or not.
Mr. Chairman, a follow-on question?
Sure.
So as we talk about phasing, interestingly enough, in the previous project, we talked with the applicant, and you were here, so I'm not speaking out of turn, as to why haven't you begun construction? With this approach and the stabilization strategy, we could actually begin to protect the permit and the timing, construction of the whole field, stabilization, while, assuming that you have to wait for this study to happen, you could, you could factor the whole development schedule and have plenty of time to establish a stable working environment, meadow, while you're waiting for this study to be completed.
Can I add to that, that there, that assumes that the study does not have the possibility of denying the project move forward?
Well, that would be the, the applicant's...
Well, the study...
It doesn't sound like that's going to...
That's not, that's not the basis of the study.
The basis, the basis isn't going to deny them. It's going to upgrade the infrastructure, I think, is what...
Depending how much money it's going to cost.
Yeah, that's exactly. If it, if it's an enormous amount of money, it may make the project infeasible at that point. And they will have begun construction when it...
On something that's not any longer feasible.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we'd want that, so.
I think that the study should probably be complete before that.
I had a couple of other... What's that?
Maybe they can bring some, um, some trip.
I had a couple of other short questions.
Yes, I don't understand what the risk this study proposes to the project, so.
Couple of other small questions that you may or may not be able to answer, where Joe's not here. It might be outside your scope. Farring Hill is a really, Farring Hill Road is a kind of a narrow, well-traveled, sometimes sped-on pathway. Where do you plan on staging trucks delivering all this equipment? You know, what's their access? You can't come from Main Street because they can't get under the railroad bridge. And where, where do they go when they get there? I mean, are they on the side of Farring Hill Road, being unloaded and brought into the site, disrupting traffic? I mean, what's the plan?
Well, initially, as part of Phase One, I mean, this is going to be a staging area for, for equipment. But, you know, obviously, initially, there is no other option other than along Farring Hill Road for those first tree-clearing vehicles and everything to unload. I mean, we had the same situation when we were doing the test pits, when we had to unload excavators and well drillers out on the site. So we just had to make do for that temporary situation while they're just getting there.
Has anybody contacted the police department as far as this, and asked about that from a safety issue?
I think we'd probably have to at that point, sure. Yeah.
The other question that I had is this insurance bond that, that is being talked about for possible off-site concerns with the neighbors. Does anybody have any idea how big it is? I mean, insurance bond is kind of a general term. I can get insurance bond for a hundred bucks.
Yeah, that'll be a question for Joe, yep.
I think I'd like to know that because my biggest fear, this, this is what keeps me up at night. I am scared to death we get this wrong. And the people that, that live around this project are the ones that ultimately pay the price. So if, if, if we do approve the project, knowing that there's a substantial insurance bond to protect these people from our screw-up, because that's what it's going to be, is our screw-up, is important. So definitely, I want to, would like you to ask Joe that question so that we know that there's, that there's enough money set aside to, to correct the, the ills of a bad decision on our part, should it go that way. And now, is that, I don't have the board, anything else on board?
I would just add quickly to your point, and it needs to be insurance that's accessible. It can't be an opportunity to sue somebody. It has to be something that would be accessible.
Good point. If there's no other questions from the board, I would entertain comments from the public. Thank you, gentlemen. If you would make a seat. The one, one thing, well, I'll, I'll wait till the first person comes up. Who in the public would like to speak? Ma'am? New comments, yes. Well, I'm going to get to that point.
Hi.
So if you could introduce yourself, and please keep in mind...
Yes.
We've, we've, we've really been working hard on this project for quite a long time.
I do know that I'm with the Conservation Commission.
Okay, good. So you know, you, you know my affinity for new information and not...
Correct. All right. Denise Schultz, 15 Roby Street, Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission. And please rest assured, there are some people zooming in tonight from conservation. Lot of information, obviously. We have not, as a conservation commission, seen this plan. I think I'm going to hold most of my questions for that. The only point I wanted to make before we went into the conservation end of it is to make sure that the seeding is not pesticide-treated. Pesticide-treated does our pollinators no good.
Good point.
And the rest of it, I'm just going to hold. We need to figure out who exactly is going to do the inspections, and definitely who has the okay to say, "Yes, it can go into the next phase."
Well, I think that's a good point, and I think it should probably be a very small committee because too many opinions just delay things.
That's right.
But I would say a representative from the planning board, a representative from the...
From the Conservation Commission.
Conservation Commission.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next. Good evening, Ms. Hayes.
It's been a while. It's been a long haul. Yeah. Annie Hayes, 52 Farring Hill Road. I am going to go over this meeting and write down responses to many, many points, because I have many. But I will try to read my own writing and address the ones that I scrawled down and can read. "Mike, to yours, I have always been concerned about the safety of Farring Hill Road. There is no shoulder. I visit people on that road frequently, including Nancy and Kathy, and there's always a strict warning because it's a windy road and traffic comes out of nowhere." Take, for example, Ms. Wertz, who got T-boned and her car totaled coming out of a full stop on Old Farring Hill Road because of someone driving crazy to get her daughter to an appointment.
I don't think anybody, Annie, not to interrupt, I don't think anybody discounts the fact that it's kind of a... I'm going to stop short of calling it a treacherous road, but it's a road that you have to pay attention to. So that's why I brought up the comment and, you know...
Thank you.
Thought that the police department needs to be involved to find out where staging needs to take place and under what circumstances.
And I would also say that I have been on Farring Hill Road when there's a deer about to cross the road and probably has enough time before I get there, but there's a semi tractor trailer coming this way. And so I stop in front of the deer so it won't come out and run into the tractor trailer. And it's by the swamp, the bridge, and so it would have been a catastrophe. I'm going to take first one I wrote down. The fire department, I've talked to Chief Kelly. He says, "We'll let it burn." There has been, I've read the letter. That sounds good about training. There's been no training. There's a course online, he said. But with the PFAS issue and the rate of cancer increasing with people in the fire department from PFAS, that was his comment. I can't remember all of the justifications, but you would need to talk to him directly. What I see about this project, first of all, I think it is so destructive and it doesn't have to happen. So it is destroying a forested watershed. Mark Rasmussen from Buzzards Bay says it's critical to the river watershed, the Wee Wee Antic, and it's cleansing after $1.2 million of investment. For that old information?
Well, not so much old, but you say Mark Rasmussen states that. Do we have a document?
I don't, but I spoke to, I, I'm trying to get that. That's, that's okay.
Yeah, I would caution hearsay. You know, if you have...
No, I understand.
One that states, "Say, this is what I think."
I've been trying to get in touch with him, and I will continue trying. So did Brendan Annett, the same thing. And they were willing to put money for conservation of the land. What I see, besides the destruction of a forested watershed, is that we just went through a severe drought. Maybe it's like labor. You, you just don't remember it after it. But it happened. It happened for a long time, and it has lasted for a long time. For example, with the study of the potential vernal pool, I looked at the weather data from the time for a month before, the March 21st, when the study took place, and the month afterwards. There had been a drought for those months. I called Mr. Goddard, who owns the company, and I said, "I'm not sure how to put a vernal pool registered because I have several from waters from Farring Hill." And he said, "Well, you just sign up on the calendar and we knock them off at that time." And I said, "I'm sorry, I'm confused. I thought it was dependent on spring rains." He said, "Oh, yes. It's heavily dependent on spring rains finding vernal pools." So Candice mentioned, maybe they didn't see a depression, but it's heavily dependent on spring rains, and there weren't spring rains. This drought, that was 2021. This drought has been going on for a long time, but extremely severe this summer. So I see a plan that is designing for excess water when I, with my well from the groundwater that we're talking about, am using every drop of gray water for flushing, for watering plants, for pre-soaking laundry, everything. So, because I am afraid, like all of us who have wells, and there are, there are 64% of people in the immediate roads around Farring Hill that have wells. So one of the things I looked up when I understood that Mr. Price was the hydrogeologist, was any other projects. He had a project in Chilmark where there was a lot of landowners or people who were involved with the land being very concerned because they thought it was a bad project and it would disturb what they knew for a very long time about the land. And one of them was a man who had a, a spring, and he was very upset about it. So what Mr., what Mr. Price said at the end of that article was, "Worst-case scenario is very unlikely, but it should have happened. The proponent will dig deeper wells." A lot of the wells of the people around Farring Hill are shallower wells. Some of them in the new housing up on maybe Helen Street have got maybe 130 feet. I think Mike Downing has a 130-foot well. The other ones are typically 70 feet. When we have this kind of drought, which is predicted to be extensive for the, the rest of our lives, let's face it, you guys, right? There are no 10-year-olds here. The rest of our lives, and probably for the 10-year-olds' lives, we're going to have a lot of drought and then caked land or dried-out land and those precipitation events. We don't even know how many precipitation events because drought seems to be impacting the water cycle globally, and rain is going to be less frequent, is less frequent. So there's a whole mess of unknowns here. As far as PFAS, the coating of the Jinko panels is DuPont Teldler. It is polyvinyl fluoride. It is a fluorid, fluoride, fluoropolymer that is in the polymer PFAS family. It is a PFAS. It can degrade to micro particles, and there are recent studies of earthworms ingesting and having DNA damage from micro particles. What about the plants ingesting and the bees ingesting from the plant?
Do you have the documents on that?
I do. I have a lot of documentation because I knew you'd ask. And Mr. Shanahan always says, "Unsubstantiated." Well, his letter from DuPont and Jinko and all was very unsubstantiated. There was no science. There were no verifications whatsoever.
If you could, now that you've entered that information into the public record, if you could forward copies of those...
I haven't. I, I just finished my health document with a lot of click links, and I'm going to do safety and welfare, and that will be all in there.
I saw, I saw your health document come through at the last second. You, you know how happy I am about that, right?
No, you're not, probably.
Oh, no. That's like this...
No, no, no. I don't expect you to, to, no, no. It's for the foreseeable future. You know, like, in two weeks, you could read that stuff. Come on.
The same thing with the Community Land and Water Coalition document that showed up at 2:00 this afternoon.
I didn't do that.
I know you didn't. I'm just putting it in the same family of unhappy, unwelcome correspondence.
What can we do, Mike? What?
449.
449? Oh, oh, oh. Well, it got in. I was afraid the meeting could, I mean, the public hearing could close. That was an unsure thing, so I wanted to...
But it still wouldn't have been, just because you got it in at the last hour doesn't mean that we would have recognized it and discussed it. All I ask, we, we are more than happy to review and discuss anything. We're, you know, we are, we are the body that is responsible for making sure that the town's people's best interests, as far as health, safety, and welfare, are looked after. Just don't send me an 11-page document two hours before a meeting and expect me to ingest it and be able to talk about it, you know, intelligently. It's tough enough you're going to get intelligent on me to begin with, but two hours before isn't going to happen. So.
We've talked about this before.
No, no, I know that, but really, I have been researching for a year, and the information...
And we've been looking for a year.
The information, I know, but the information on PFAS is so new and it is so abundant. Nanoparticles, you know? So mea culpa and forgive me, please.
Okay. You got a little bit more time to wrap up?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just a little bit.
When Mr. Price on his bulletin says, "No significant water quality..." Neil, what was the word you used? Neil, Neil, I'm sorry, through you. Asking Mr. Price what he said about no significant adjective water something quality?
Degradation?
Degradation? No, I don't think so.
I think that's the word he used. It was...
Did you say?
Impacts possibly?
Okay. It was one of the big bullets. When the water loses all its forest and leaf litter nourishment, the minerals, all of that, that is severe degradation. And I would say it loses oxygenation from the forest. I would say it loses a great deal. And the land around it is being nurtured, the wetlands, the swamps. I have wet meadow, meadows, all of the area, the conservation land. It is all nourished by given channels down that hill. When you start messing with it and you destroy the forest on the watershed ridge, I don't see how... I don't see how you're not changing everything. There is, what is the nourishment that's going down to all of the land surrounding? It's going into the soil, perhaps, the groundwater, maybe. The water balance might be just a little altered, but it's a very different kettle of fish.
Okay. If you, you have one minute to tidy up your thoughts.
All right. There's been no mention of citizens who were sandwiched between two solar developments, and one has already changed the hydrology, as Eric has discussed. There's a lot about the PFAS. So I was wondering from you or from the proponent about if drought with no forest holding water that helps our wells and to sustain our groundwater, how about a performance bond for wells running dry for 77 people or whatever?
Well, that can definitely be discussed. Once we get an idea of the scope of this bond that they're anticipating, then we can discuss what it's going to protect the residents from.
Uh, okay, that's good.
Thank you, Annie.
Thank you.
It's always a pleasure to see you.
It's nice to see all of you, asking really good questions.
Trying. We're trying our best. Is there anybody else in the audience? Ma'am?
Hello. My name is Catherine Harrelson, and I am with Community Land and Water Coalition. I'm going to keep my comment very, very brief. I'm just here tonight to submit for public comment, Section 1551 from the Wareham zoning bylaws, which is relation to Conservation Commission approvals. And the section of bylaws states, 1551.1, the applicant shall submit to the planning board or other permit-granting authority in addition to the other requirements for site plan review either, number one, a determination of non-applicability of the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 131, Section 40, and Wareham Wetland Protective Bylaw issued by the Conservation Commission as described in that act, or, number two, an order of conditions or order of resource area delineation covering the proposed work or approving the wetland resource area delineations issued by the Conservation Commission for the purpose of protecting those interests described in the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and the Wareham Wetlands Protective Bylaws, Division 6, Section 1. And 1551.2 states that the planning board may issue site plan approval only after receipt of the original certified copy of either 1551A or B. And so I just want to state for the public record that we at Community Land and Water Coalition look forward to a complete application of the entire process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Sir?
Eric Lentillo, 15 Squirrel Island Road, just, just south of Ferring Hill. I'm going to hold a lot of my questions and comments till Mr. Shanahan is here, but I do have one thing I'm just going to mention. And since conservation, there's somebody here from conservation, and we've spoken about that. And I was at the one meeting that they showed up, the only meeting. The linchpin in all of this is the water. Water runoff, erosion slash soil analysis, water quality, not just quantity. The Conservation Commission has yet to weigh in on these issues. The one meeting that they've had to date with Mr. Shanahan resulted with them having serious concerns about the watershed in the Weewy Antic River. So it does come back to water. I do have just a couple of questions in relation to a lot of the notes I took tonight. So a question this way that can come that way. The seed mix on the hill, is the seed mix on the hill for a hill, for an incline, not just a flat plain of seeding? But, because I do know there are specific grasses and seeding issues for inclination and stuff on surfaces. So that's the one question. And I'm not quite, I don't remember from a ways back, but are arborvitae's natural to the area, to Ferring Hill? They're going to plant arborvitae's for screening? And are the screening, are there screening in rows like Toby Hill, or are they planted like a forest, diverse? And are these arborvitae's, do they grow very tall, these, this type of arborvitae's, I'm wondering?
We can confirm that for you, but I believe that the arborvitae are only a suggested planting.
Okay.
And in the past projects that we've been involved in, we have taken the stance of dual, dual-line staggered plantings. So you don't have just a row of soldiers, you know, you, there's screening with the staggering. Now, whether it ultimately ends up being arborvitae, that's still yet to be decided.
Well, I know in past solar field projects, that has been a main issue of their plantings being natural to that area, if they're going to plant anything to create screenings and stuff.
I can guarantee you're looking at the biggest proponent when it comes to line of sight for the residents of the town.
Yeah.
I don't want to, I don't want anybody to have to look at something that is going to degrade their quality of life.
Yeah. And just the last thing, on the, on the line of sight, I go up and down that road many times a day. I do stop, and I pull over, and I look at all different times of the day, and I look up that hill. And I don't know what they're going to put there that we aren't going to see those panels. With all the trees that are there, that are right there on Ferring Hill already, you can see clear right through to the top. So even if they left those trees in the front for a buffer or something, we're going to see all those panels all the way up that hill. There's going to be no buffer to, you know, to hide that stuff. Just a few thoughts. I'm going to save the rest for when Mr. Shanahan is here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ma'am?
I just wanted to address his concerns about the plantings. And Conservation Commission does take a good look at what is being planted and assures that it is Massachusetts-approved.
And will thrive in the area.
And will thrive in the area, and that it's one of our natural plantings.
Thank you. Nancy McHale, Ferring Hill Road. Just wondering if there's, the phasing is, seems to be the main change to the project at this point. I just wondered if there are any other major sorts of things that are being considered that the Atlantic Design or Mr. Price from Horsley Wooden could share with us at this time?
I don't believe, after reading all the notes from the various meetings, that there's anything earth-shattering in the, in the project that's changed, other than the way that they're trying to control erosion during construction with the phasing, which is obviously the big concern.
That's terrific. Could I ask that that phasing document and any other relative documents be posted on the planning board site, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Do we have anybody on the line that wants to weigh in? No, we're good. Okay. Having seen no other hands, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to, the 17th is already starting to get busy.
Mr. Chairman, before you continue the hearing, there's one thing I wanted to present to you tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been working on a draft of the decision for this, and I think it's worth your time looking at before the next meeting. Because what I did here was set it up so the criteria of the regulations is listed out, and a finding and is suggested, or not suggested, but a finding is something that you could add to each of those criteria. So this is something you'll probably have to do for the final decision on the, on the application. But this is to give you a start on thinking through what all the criteria are and how you can apply them to the project.
Okay, so this is something that we're going to get to go home and read?
Yeah.
Good. No surprises.
This is something you prepared?
Yes.
Okay. So, aside from that, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. It's my agenda. Continue the public hearing for 91 and 101 Ferring Hill Road to the-
Is there a bunch of these issues?
I think the third's probably pushing it.
I think it'd be okay for the third.
He said he would be.
Do we have to fit in for the town meeting?
Have him fill in some of the gaps here.
I thought we were done with that.
That's right, I thought.
I thought we were done.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Buckland, are there any further zoning bylaw changes that we need to schedule public hearings on between now and town meeting?
Yes, we have.
We're going to do 13, we're going to do 13 tonight.
Right, but there's the section, Article 12, the MS4 regulation, and there's the marijuana moratorium and the commercial signs in the windows that are going to have to be on.
So our meetings are starting to get clogged up.
I think those are simple hearings. I don't think that's going to take a lot of time.
When were you planning on, the 17th or starting on the third?
I think the 17th is already starting to get filled. I was looking for the third. But I don't know if the applicant's going to be ready with all the information by then.
The applicant probably should be ready by the third for this one.
You think so?
Yeah.
You're an optimistic sort. I like that. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion that we continue the public hearing for 91 and 101 Ferring Hill Road to the Wareham Planning Board meeting scheduled for October 3, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Cherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Excuse me? Conservation doesn't hear this until October 5.
We won't be able to close public hearing, though.
You'll get responses to the questions that have been brought up tonight.
Yeah, I think between the responses that the proponent's going to give us and the feedback from Conservation Commission, we're probably going to need two more hearings to wrap this up anyway.
So the third and the 17th?
If we add them to the 17th, then that, that's it. I mean, there's nothing else going on that meeting.
Well, no, we have public hearings we've got to schedule.
I understand, but that, that's, aside from those, that's it. Nothing else coming up to go on that meeting.
All right. And October 3, we've got to do Wareham Retail Management.
That shouldn't take long, I don't expect.
Okay.
Okay, so we can schedule this project for October 3, with the understanding that the proponent will be ready with the information discussed tonight, and then we'll put it on the 17th with the anticipation of discussing the feedback from Conservation and possibly closing the public hearing at that point. Does that work?
That sounds good.
Okay. Do I have to re-motion that, or are we good?
We're good. Okay. I'd just make one comment. You've got to make sure you get your information to the proponent, to the Concom, so they can have their hearing, so they can get their information to us. And there seems to maybe be a disconnect. I don't know. I'm not part of that committee. I just don't want to schedule another meeting, not have the information, and have to schedule another meeting.
Another meeting, right.
I mean, I'm another meeting out on this.
Okay, no, thank you. All right, so next on the list, 3-22 Jason St. Martin Site Plan Review, 5 Dodie Street. Is there someone here to speak to that?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, gentlemen? Right, thank you.
Thank you.
On this, I note also, the Conservation Commission has not-
Has not weighed in.
Has not come-
We need some sort of policy or procedure laid out so we know they know where they are. We put out our-
Right. And there's no communication between the two?
And we're spinning away without the determination. We do nothing.
I don't see anybody here to speak to 5 Dodie Street?
Yes, that's the Everso's project.
Yes, it is, sir. Yes, it is.
Yeah, I guess I could.
Yeah, but if the applicant isn't here-
The applicant's not here. Yeah, we can't continue. I would like to ask the young lady from the Conservation Commission, is this on the Conservation Commission's agenda?
It's been on every meeting. They haven't actually come to the meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Denise, you have to come. We did do a-
Sorry, Bob.
We did, we did do a site walkthrough last week.
Yeah, that, I read the notes that you sent. Those were-
Yeah, I went on the site walkthrough. It's been on our agenda. They've just been continuing it and have not come to the meetings.
Okay, thank you.
They're calling you and asking for continuation.
Correct. They are asking for the continuances.
And tonight, they're a no-show. They're not even-
Did they ask to be on the agenda, or did it just kind of?
I didn't add it to the agenda. I don't know. I don't know what-
It was continued from the last meeting to this date.
It was date certain.
But, but no communication from the applicant that they weren't going to attend, or that they needed a continuance or anything like that.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
So, let's, let's continue this out into November or something.
Well, that's, that's what I'm thinking. It's, it's obviously not high on their importance list, so let's give ourselves a little breathing room.
They're on the list. They didn't ask for continuance. We should do something more than just continuing it. The only option we would have would be to-
To just deny it for lack of information?
I think we should. We've talked about this for months.
Yeah, I mean, there are some projects like Ferring Hill, which is-
I agree 100%.
-hugely engaged, and we talk about it for a long time.
100%. This is a small project.
And, and we're getting no cooperation from the applicant whatsoever.
Exactly.
I, I would say that during the site walkthrough, they were very informative and cooperative, so.
But why aren't they here?
That I don't know. So that, I can't, we can't-
I want to be closed a public hearing on it. We can't. Why?
Because we don't have input from Conservation.
Yeah, we don't have input from Conservation, right. So can, can we do this? Can, can I put this out to the board that we continue this into November? We'll pick a date certain in November, with the applicant being made aware of the fact that if there's no input from them for that meeting, that at that point, we're just going to, we're going to deny it due to a lack of information. That, but given fair warning, it's not like we're saying they got to be here next week. We're giving them two months, and we'll put an end to it then, one way or another, whether we vote on it with that information they've given us, or we vote on it with information they haven't given us. I was looking for a little input. That wasn't really a dialogue.
I think you're giving them too much time.
Yeah. And we could write them a letter.
Yes, from, from the planning office?
Yeah. If you need help.
I think it should come from the board.
Yeah. You know, if you need a draft.
I can, I can put something together and ask Sonia to, to put it together for us.
Yeah. Are we going to have the information from Concom at that time to make a decision?
Right. But the information from Concom is dependent on the applicant showing up at their-
Showing up there.
So this is all in their hands. They're either going to do it or not.
So they can deny.
Correct.
Due to a lack of information.
The next meeting. And then we can act on it the following meeting.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just-
It's, it's clogging up our agenda.
As you've said many times, I'm tired.
Yeah. No, I agree. It's clogging up our agenda. All right, so I would, I would make a motion that we continue 5 Dodie Street map, 103 Lot 1027, to the meeting of November 14, with the understanding that if we don't have input from Concom due to- to the meeting of November 14, with the understanding that if we don't have input from Concom due to the applicant's inability to show up at the meeting and participate, then at that time, we'll take a vote to either approve or deny based on what we have in front of us.
I'd love to make that motion.
I will accept that motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherry Quirk. All in favor? Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl? Don't feel bad if you say nay.
No, no, I'm just concerned about communications with our applicants and...
Well, I understand that, but that doesn't help our situation now.
So we just need to make sure they understand, because technically, we can't continue a meeting or continue a public hearing without their agreement. We're in a bind if...
Well, the only other option we have then is to vote to deny tonight.
Yes, that would be the only other option, yeah.
I'd make that motion in a heartbeat.
I think we're trying to be as fair to them as we possibly can.
No, no, I'm agreeing with you.
But they're not being fair in return. They just don't show up.
Well, this is where we draw the line in the...
We don't know if they're not being fair in return, because we don't know if they knew they were supposed to be on the agenda tonight.
It's on our website.
It's on the website, it's public information.
And they're on the website.
And they have a project manager. I mean, where is he?
Okay, fair comment. Okay, I'll vote with the majority.
And the chair votes aye, so we'll reschedule 5 Dodie Street for November 14, hopefully with input from Conservation.
Or denial?
Well, it's input one way or the other.
One way or the other.
Right, either way, it's going to come to an end on November 14.
Yep. Long overdue.
How is it November 14?
November 14, yes, sir. All right, so last on the list is Article for Town Meeting Amendment to Zoning Bylaws, Article 13, Section 1381, Zoning Protection for Nonconforming Lots. I didn't see any paperwork in the box on this, Ken.
We got this a long time ago, but...
I thought our work with this was done.
It is. Well, yeah, I think if Ken presents, it's a simple wording change, I believe.
This is Article 21 on the draft Fall Town Meeting Warrant that's been presented by the Board of Selectmen for October 24, 2022. It falls under Section 1380, which is nonconforming lots, and what it does is it changes two words. In Section 1381, under subsection 2 and on subsection 3, there's a provision that says that the lots which are held in common ownership or under common control may be buildable for single or two-family residential use, provided that such lots have 7,500 square feet and 75 feet of frontage, and were lawfully laid out by plan or deed prior to November 19, 1951, or confirmed, conformed to, and here's the word change, where it says, conformed to setback requirements, and the proposal is to say, conformed to zoning requirements. So it would include things like coverage, FAR, whatever else applies to a lot of dimensional standard, or other zoning requirement. So it changes the word from setback to zoning requirements as of January 1, 1976. Same thing goes for subsection 3, where buildings located their owners be setback equal to the setback in effect at the time of the creation or endorsement prior to November 19, 1951. Structures must meet the setback requirements, and here again, it's changed to zoning requirements of the first published regulation in effect for the applicable zoning district. So again, it sets all zoning requirements in action against the review of nonconforming lot.
Okay, understandable.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's only one other very minor change that ought to go into Section 2, and that is to replace the word "or" after the date of November 1951 to "and." If you leave the "or" in place, it means that it's either in conformance with the subdivision plan, or it meets setback requirements, or zoning requirements. I think it ought to say that "laid out by plan or deed prior to November 19, 1951 and conforms to zoning requirements."
What do you think about that, Ken?
Well, that sets up two different dates, because the zoning requirements are in effect as of January 1, 1976, where the lot was laid out in 1951, so it would have been conforming to the zoning regulations in 1951 and not 1976. So it really should be an "or" in that case.
Well, that leaves it up as an option, Ken. I don't think the intent was that it's an option, because the zoning did change in '76. So the plan, if it was laid out prior to 1951, it means that it was laid out prior to the zoning adoption in the town, that's all.
Right.
But the zoning requirements changed in '76, so I think it ought to say both.
Well, it was protected if it was before 1951, November 19, 1951, but then anything after that, when zoning was in place, it would have to conform to the zoning requirements as of January 1, 1976. So I think it's correct to be in an "or" in this case.
Well, if you left the "or" in place, it would mean that it did not have to comply with the requirements of 1976.
If it was made before 1951, yes.
What happens with the timeframe in between?
That wasn't the intent, was it?
The intent of this was to say that a lot that was created before zoning was created is protected as a nonconforming lot, if it has 7,500 square feet of frontage and 75 feet of frontage and 7,500 square foot of area, or otherwise, if it conformed to the zoning requirements as of January 1, 1976. It doesn't say that it had to be created in any particular timeframe, it just conforms to those zoning requirements as of January 1, 1976.
Okay, and this change was put forth by the Board of Selectmen, you said?
No, no, we discussed this when the zoning board was here in front of us.
The zoning board of appeals brought this up.
Yeah, when Nazzy was here?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
This was related to cleaning up setbacks and all the work we, Jane, did on Article 6.
Okay, so this is just a, well, it's a public hearing.
You can let people comment.
Can I just follow up on that a little bit? I've got the changes to the Zoning Act, which took place in 1979, and that's where this came into being, and under the summary, it says under Item 2, that the lot must be shown on a plan which is endorsed or recorded as of January 1, 1976. And then the third one is, the lot must have complied with the local zoning provisions which were in effect on January 1, 1976. So it seems to me that it suggests that it needs to conform to both of those things.
Well, that's January 1, 1976. This is, what this says is, if the lot was created before zoning was created, if it was created in 1951 or before, it is protected as well.
I understand that, and that would be the case for anything prior to 1976, because whatever zoning was in place prior to 1976 probably would have been different, and probably be less restrictive. But the statute says that it then must, anything prior to January 1, 1976 must comply with the local zoning regulations which were in effect as of January 1, 76. So it seems to me that it has to be in those two parts. It's not an either/or, but it's both.
Well, that's...
It has to be a plan that was prior to 1976, and it doesn't reflect a specific date, other than our local bylaw, which says it's prior to zoning, which was 1951. But the two provisions say that it must be on a plan which is endorsed or recorded as of January 1, and then it must be complied with the local zoning which were in effect. So I'm not sure that it can be either/or. It's got to be linked together as both, doesn't it?
No, it doesn't, because what they're saying here in this, in our bylaw, is that anything that was done before zoning was in place is protected if it has 7,500 square feet of area and 75 feet of frontage. So if it's before 1951, it's got a green light with the area and frontage, and if it wasn't done before 1951, if it was done after 1951, then it has to conform to the zoning requirements as of January 1, 1976, which is what that state law says.
A question, is this more easily resolved, rather than debating "and" or "or," by writing this as two sentences or three sentences? That is more clear? That says exactly what you just said, Mr. Buckland?
If you believe it's necessary, yeah, it could be done as two sentences.
I'm just trying to make sure that it's most clear.
It could be done that way if it was another sentence there, yeah.
Would that satisfy your concern?
No, it doesn't. I would suggest you get a reading from Town Council on this. I think that it applies to both things, because if it doesn't, it simply means that anything prior to 1951 didn't have any zoning protection at all. It had no zoning. The town did not adopt zoning until November of 1951, so if there's a plan that was recorded prior to that date, it has no zoning protection whatsoever.
Well, it does have zoning protection.
It has to have, as of that date, not only is it a plan prior to 51, but it also has to have 7,500 square feet and at least 75 feet of frontage. Those two provisions are required. But if all you say is after that, or it conformed to the zoning requirements in effect of January 1, 1976, then the 7,500 square feet and the 75 feet of frontage wouldn't apply, because it would be more than that. Lots in '76 were much greater than 7,500 square feet. The minimum was like 10,000, or it might have been even 30,000.
So if we wrote...
I just think it needs clarification as to whether or not both apply, or whether they can apply separately, and you can either use one or the other.
Do we have time to do this with council?
Yeah, we do.
Between now and the 3rd, we'll just review it again on the 3rd?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do it that way.
So we get it right. I mean, we're only talking one word, he should be able to give us that answer pretty quick.
Well, it's got to, it's not just one word, but it's the interpretation of what it means, one word or the other.
Well, I understand, but it still boils down to one word.
It does, yes.
And we bring this to council, let's suggest?
Yes, that's what I'm thinking, is we bring that "and" or "or" to council, get his input, and then from his input, we determine whether or not we have to address it, or if we leave it as Ken has presented it.
Cool.
But we're clear that we're going to change setback to zoning?
Yes, that I agree with.
Yep.
Ms. Wertz, would you like to make a comment? Seems how this is a public meeting, public hearing.
Tricia Wertz, I live at 30 Taff Street, and I'm talking as a resident. So I was looking at this proposed change, this article, myself, these last few days, and one of the things that I will say is, I live in a beach community, and there's lots of beach communities, and from what I understand, these beach communities believe that if they acquire their property before zoning, that they have the right to build on it, no matter what size it is. Now, in Briwood Beach, those lots were original Eighth Acre lots, so I don't know if what's being proposed changes the ability for these people who have been grandfathered in, regardless of what beach it is, they were communities built right after World War II, and bought by a lot of people for small summer cottages, and I just, I don't know if by changing it to the wording that's happening here, if we're actually taking away the rights of those people. That's just a question.
Yeah, I don't think, honestly, I don't think we're looking at it as taking away anybody's rights, I think we're just trying to get a handle on...
But what I'm saying is, some of these people who have been grandfathered in, we may want to check it, because they may see it as taking away their rights.
Well, that could be possible, they could see it that way, and they would have their chance to vote a town meeting to not support this.
Mr. Chairman, this particular item that we're discussing is with respect to lots held in common ownership. Not a single lot that was held, that was not a part of a different lot at a different time.
Yeah.
Something that's been held as an individual prior to zoning, if it meets at least 5,000 square feet and 50 feet of frontage, it's fine.
Right.
We're talking about more than one lot, and this is a result of what some people did a number of years ago, where they check and boarded lots all over the place, so that they got protection from only having a single ownership of that one lot, then another person in the same family got the second lot, and a third person in the same family got the third lot. This basically does away with that. But the language here that's changed has to do with the fact that the zoning bylaw, our bylaw said it conformed to the setback requirements.
Right, which kind of pigeonholed us, not the rest of it.
Yeah, that's simply a little, small smidgen of the zoning.
Yeah.
So it's got nothing to do with changing the common ownership or anything like that. It simply is making sure that it's not just setbacks we're talking about, but the zoning in general.
Okay. Okay, so...
Just a question, clarification. How does zoning protection apply to this, going as far back as 1951? Zoning protection would only have been in place for seven years, right? So this bylaw could actually be enforced for properties that are that old?
The seven years is something you get when you get zoning protection from a subdivision.
So do these lot owners have zoning protection? No. I'm trying to understand how that would work.
They have protection under, there's protection that's provided by the state law that we translate in our local bylaws in certain ways, to say what is pre-existing, nonconforming, and so protected from the changes that have been ravaged by zoning in the meantime.
Right, but I'm just wondering how a lot 60 years old, would this...
The state law says if it has 5,000 square feet and 50 feet of frontage, then it's okay.
Okay.
You can build a house on it, if you get a special permit from the Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Jim Moniz, Precinct 4. Is this article, zoning article, or any of the others that are being proposed for town meeting on a planning board website under proposed articles?
I believe they are. I can double-check that.
This one is not under proposed.
I looked on site, I can't find any of them.
They've been filed with the town clerk.
I didn't ask. It should be on their site, then. Let's get the information out there, so people can look at them, and you don't have to run up to the town clerk's office and get a paper copy. So that's all I'd like to say, and if you could please get them up there, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anybody online that wants to weigh in? Okay, so...
I have a quick comment. Dare I say this? Well, we've been talking about 1381, and 1381 is actually under the header 1370, nonconforming lots. And if you notice, under 1360, the first item is 1371. And if you look at item 1350, it's item 1361.
Not in the version I'm looking at.
No? Okay. It's been corrected, though.
What version of the bylaw?
Never mind.
No, no, which, I want to, because I'm looking at the 2019 one right now.
That's what I have.
I need it under a copy, I think.
It doesn't represent what you're just...
Okay.
We'll get you a new book.
Yeah, we haven't gotten new copies of the bylaws yet, right, Ken?
No, we haven't. I was waiting for the Attorney General to okay the solar bylaw or deny it for producing the next level of...
See, I asked Sonia for a new book, and I got one.
That's because you're prettier than me.
Just saying. Okay, so if there's no other input from the public, I would entertain a motion to table, Article 1381.
Continue?
Oh, yeah, we do have to continue. Continue the public hearing for Article 13, Section 1381, zoning protection for nonconforming lots to the meeting of the 3rd, which will give us time to consult with council on the language question raised tonight, and hopefully then we can put it to bed at that date.
So moved. So moved.
We have a motion from Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Article 13. Okay. Other topics?
I have one question. What is the status of the search for Charlie's replacement?
Ooh, you beat me to the punch. That was my, that was going to be mine.
And I think you should-
I want to, I want to take that question.
Okay, you can have it.
Where are we at with that?
We have an RFP out on the street. It's due October 15th, I believe.
Okay.
We've had a couple of contacts from engineering firms interested in applying for the, for the job.
Hearing firms that don't appear before us?
That don't appear before us, no, that's right.
Okay, good. Because that would be a problem for me. Okay, good. So there's some interest that's being generated?
Yeah, there is.
Okay. The, the time is drawing near.
Yeah.
And honestly, there's not a whole lot of things that keep me up at night, but Charlie's retirement does.
Not having you around.
Regarding that, this, this individual is not a town employee. This individual works for the planning board, so we get approval?
Yeah, I would, I would have to assume, it might be a stupid assumption, that we would be able to weigh in on the hiring of this individual?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's appropriate. But of course, this is somebody who works for the Conservation Commission, Joint Board of Appeals, Planning Board, and-
So we should all be able to weigh in?
Yeah, it should all be consensus.
Interviewing committee?
Yeah, I think so. I think we-
It just has to work speedy.
We just have to pick a couple of people from each committee, and one, one person from each committee.
Yeah, small committees work fast.
Well, just the chairs, the chairs from the respective committees. That's more work for you, so.
Or their appointees.
Or their appointees.
Okay.
All that being said, we have a full agenda coming up for the next few meetings, and we're into October, and we're into the holidays, and Charlie's gone. We need to make this a priority.
Well, you said October 15th is when they're due?
Yes, they're due October 15th.
And has anybody submitted yet?
No, nobody submitted yet.
So could we set up an interview regardless?
Yes.
So it's on the agenda?
That's a good idea.
I don't-
Well, it doesn't have to be at this meeting, I don't think.
No, I think it could be a-
Were you saying an agenda item on one of our meetings?
I would, I wouldn't put it before a meeting. I think I would rather see a
Workshop?
A workshop.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make sure it gets done.
Oh, yeah.
The interview process for a potential town contractor doesn't have to be a public meeting, does it?
No, it doesn't. And we, we've actually, in the RFP, I think we scheduled the interview process already.
So it's all rescheduled?
Yeah, it's already scheduled in the RFP.
That's good, that's good for me, then.
Yeah, all right, that works. Board member comments?
You, you and Sam are aware, I don't know if Sherri, Mike, and Jane are aware that we did a site walkthrough with Wareham Retail Management. Charlie was there and met with, I guess, the project manager, project engineer?
Representative from the union.
Yeah. So, and we came to an agreement. They have to submit plans by the 28th. Well, they need to begin taking immediate action on the landscaping issues, which didn't require any approval to us, and then Charlie will inspect and let us know. But with regarding the dumpster, they're going to submit plans not later than Wednesday, so that we have time for Monday of changing the curb cut, so that a-
The truck can get a straight shot.
A truck can come in, back up, and then take a straight shot into the dumpster. They thought that was the quickest solution. There were others that I could think of, but that was the quickest. So they're going to do a curb cut right there.
And then just change the configuration of the enclosure.
No, they don't even have to do that. If they do that curb cut, he thinks he can get his truck to back in, and then that, I guess we would need, I know, I know Charlie and I discussed this, whether that's a minor modification, a major modification, or we just have to determine.
I would think, my own opinion is it's a minor modification.
It probably is, once, once we see it, but, and then they can just go forward when we, when we nod and smile, if, if they come in with some kind of wild-
I think he knew how serious we were.
I'm sure the residents-
I told them we're looking at closing them down.
I'm sure the residents of Wareham would appreciate not looking at those dumpsters any-
The landscaping, the erosion is horrific.
Yeah.
Let's see if it works, too. Yeah, maybe they find out it won't work.
Since we're on public comments, I've brought this up before, and amazingly, the night that I brought it up, the very next morning, the grass got cut.
Yeah.
But the solar array on Toby Road, all the grass, it looks like hell. I mean, it's this high again. I mean, how do we-
That's a zoning enforcement officer issue.
That wasn't even in zoning.
So we have to-
Well, it's the building inspector, right? Or not the building inspector, but the, somebody in the Inspectional Services Department.
Approved by someone other than zoning and, and planning.
It was, it was approved as of right, I believe.
Yeah.
So we have no teeth, then? It just got a little bit, basically?
No, there's, there's other laws and-
We talked about this that day, looking at the entrance, the west entrance from Chipotle. Walmart's responsible for all that. And I mean, there are trees growing there. And it looks like hell. And we asked the gentleman, "What about all that over there?" He said, "That's Walmart, not us." And it-
That's-
We've talked about this a lot.
He was talking about the solar project on Toby.
I know.
All of this, there's somebody- Another example of where we're not enforcing.
Exactly. I mean, it's got to the point where it's looking crappy all over the place. And I don't know what we do about it. I mean, standing there, Carl and I are standing there, Charlie, and looking out, and section that's Walmart's responsibility, there are trees growing there since they opened. There are trees, and it looks like crap. You can hardly see the fence. It's all weeds and trees and vines. And then you look at Chipotle, it's a disaster. And you start looking around.
We could do the same thing there. If they're in violation of special permit,
Just reopen it?
We can reexamine that, and if the, if we don't have support from-
From zone enforcement?
Right. If we did, this may not sound the right way, I wanted to, but if we did this to Walmart and enforced it, I think that may send a message to other malls and strip malls and developers out there that nobody is below us reopening and making them aware that they have conditions that they haven't met.
Yeah.
We have, someone, what's the status of Master Mill Works? Have they resolved the lighting issue?
Yeah.
No, they haven't.
Do we, do they have a plan to?
I don't know.
Well, they always guarantee they will.
There's a-
Another one.
So there's another one that's just basically thumbing their nose at us?
Yeah, they're not doing anything.
Say that, sound that crass, but that's basically what's going on.
That's what I was talking about with Doty. And, and you talked about it for a long time, and going back to Richard. We're not a yes board. We're a do-it-by-the-conditions. If you don't do it by the conditions, we'll go back before us. You're not, you're in violation. Who's going to do this?
Can, can we, can we, the, the planning board put a letter together through the planning office to enforcement?
Yeah, we can.
pleading for help.
Who do you want to, how do you want to make the appeal? Do you want, do you want to take it directly to the, say, Wareham Retail Management? And say, you'll pull the permit if they don't?
Yes.
We have the, we have Wareham Retail Management's attention right now, so I think we can leave them off the list, but I would definitely involve Master Mill Works for the lighting. I would involve whoever's responsible for that solar array on Toby Road. They've got-
That's Eversource, I believe.
Well, whoever it is.
Doesn't matter.
The shrubbery that's died off, that they haven't dealt with. They don't cut the grass. You know, it, it looks like heading to the clamps down there, and there's no reason for it. It just-
They're not following conditions set in the permit.
Right.
Well, that one, there was no permit.
There was a building permit for that one. Electrical-
Building permit, not a special-
Electrical permit, actually. And what we did was, we negotiated the sidewalk and the berm out of their-
And they're not maintaining it?
And they're not maintaining it, yeah.
So that should, that should be the crux of the letter, is you're not maintaining the screening and the frontage.
You said you'd put in, yeah.
Right, so-
Remove, remove the dead ones?
How do we do it? How do we take care of it?
I, I think, write a letter, copy in town council, and threaten legal action if they don't.
So do you need a letter from, from the board, or from me?
I need a vote of the board.
Okay, so I would entertain a vote, a motion to vote on taking affirmative action against Master Mill Works for the dark sky lighting that they're not compliant with, and with Eversource for the screening and frontage that's not being maintained for the Toby Road array.
And Walmart.
And Walmart for
For the vegetative-
For the vegetation that's not being controlled on the inside of their fence.
They, they have a $20,000, Walmart has a $20,000 bond, a performance bond with the town for vegetation on the landscaping on the, on the plan.
Cool.
They've contacted me before about it, and I told them they weren't getting their money back until they fixed up some of the plantings.
So let's-
Walmart doesn't even think about $20,000.
No, they don't. They, they ignore that.
All right, so let's, let's vote on those three addresses. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor to take action? Say aye, Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll put together-
unanimous.
I'll put together three quick letters that Sonia can clean up my spelling on and send them to where they need to go.
Sounds good.
All right. With no further ado, I would take a motion to adjourn. I have a motion from Sam. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second from Jane. All in favor? Jane, Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
No.
Mike wants to stay, I know. Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
To remind you, there's a meeting on the 29th on Thursday
I saw that.
With the redevelopment authority to talk over the urban renewal plan.
Where are we meeting?
In room 27 or online?
Not online.
Room 27.